Wes, now that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing by our indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O grace is God, we come this afternoon, Lord, asking you to forgive us for our sins. We come, Lord, asking you to have mercy upon each and every one of us. We honor you, O Lord, in all that we do and say. We pray, Lord, further for those who are hurting, especially during this holiday season, Lord. Bless and comfort those who are sick and shut in. Bless and comfort those who are bereaved at this time, Lord. Strengthen them where they may be weak. And we pray, O Lord, as we go through this season, that we remember the true reason, and that is to give glory to your son, Jesus Christ. Now, Lord, we pray that we will conduct this business honorably and that, Lord, when it's all said and done, we've done what we should do for your citizens. When we leave here tonight, allow us to arrive safely to our destination. In your name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
The character trait of the month is sensitivity, using my senses to perceive the true attitudes and emotions of others. At this time, we have approval of a minute from City Council Meeting, December the 2nd, 2014. We have a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving those minutes, signified by raising your right hand? Those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak on any item concerning tonight's agenda, please come forward, please. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask for a point of privilege. Been a while since I've asked for one. At this time, I'd like to introduce our new athletic director, Russ Sanders. Russ started yesterday, and I'm just pleased that he keeps coming back each workday. And he lives here in Prattville, and we're very excited he's joining our Parks and Recs team. And I'd like to ask Russ if he has anything to say.
Just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to kind of work with the city. Look forward to working with all departments and helping the youth to have fun playing sports and try to keep them out of trouble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish you well, sir.
Glad you're here. Glad you're part of our Quality Life team there, and look forward to many, many days ahead before us. As a public service announcement, I'd like to just mention that we have adjusted our sanitation schedules for Christmas and New Year's week, and all that information is on our city website. We ask that you connect there or on our Facebook to keep current on all these adjusted schedules. At this point in time, I'd also like to thank all the department heads here behind me. Basically, this is your team or our team efficiency. And just to break it down, public safety, we have our Chief Brown, Chief Mark Thompson, Judge Louis Colley, City Prosecutor Rob Riddle, Chief Magistrate Charlotte Adair. Public Works, we have Randy Lucas and his many divisions up underneath him. General Government, we have Lisa Thrash, Doug Mosley, Kathy Dickerson, Robbie Anderson, Joel Duke. Quality of Life, we have Kelly Cook. As you've heard me mention before, we are a mechanized, technology-based, service-oriented organization, where I cannot compliment them on all their achievements in calendar year 2014. I'd like to highlight on some achievements for each. In public safety, promotions and public safety awareness, I need to thank Chief Brown, Chief Thompson, Lisa Thrash for doing such a stellar job establishing new promotional policies, the Police and Fire Citizens Academy also, with additional things to come in that, in Public Safety Department there. In the judicial arena, the streamlining and incorporation they have shown with the implementation of the Judicial Special Revenue Fund. Public Works, as I mentioned before, they are sometimes overlooked department. I do feel that with the leadership of Randy Lucas and the various divisions up underneath him and the reorganizations that have taken place, these divisions are becoming more efficient, sorry, more effective, more efficient, and will ever be evolving. These changes might not be visible to the public at present, but over time, they'll notice the efficiency in the premier services we deliver. We credit them also with the curb appeal of this city and commend the extra efforts they made this year that took that to a new level. In General Government, as I mentioned before, Lisa Thrash over the HR department, she has implemented changes that continue to keep our healthcare costs manageable. Doug Mosley financed in IT departments. He continues to save dollars for our citizens through technology. Doug was key in the process of acquiring a better credit rating, as well as the successful refinancing of some of our bonds. This saves our city a considerable amount in interest. Kathy Dickerson, the city clerk, has streamlined her department through surplus program procedures coupled with keeping this council informed of continuing education opportunities. Robbie Anderson, engineering, has kept this city transversible with sidewalk improvement projects, as well as piping projects, and all have been very positive results. Joel Duke with our planning and development uses his expertise to help businesses and citizens alike in their pursuit of life or business endeavors here in our great city. Our Quality of Life programs, Kelly Cook with the Parks and Recreation Department has developed new life, has breathed new life into our parks, as well as recreation programs, making our programs address physical health and mental well-being. But I also need to thank this council. Thank you. Without the funding you have provided, their success would not be possible without it. All these areas coupled together are the time, the tools, and the talent needed to accomplish the goals and the task at hand. Again, I thank you and wish you all a very Merry Christmas, and I want to applaud each and every one of you guys for helping us move this city forward. So, thank you. With that, again, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, and then that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any comments or questions for the mayor? Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Before I get to Counsel's Special Committees, I do want to recognize we have an elected official, Judge Booth, and I do want to recognize him before we start. Judge Al Booth. Report from Counsel and Special Committee, Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
At this time, we have a report on our status of city finance from our finance director.
Everyone should have the packet in front of them with the financial information for the month of November. You'll see the first sheet in the packet is the revenue report, and everything is running right in line where it should be. The one exception you will see is property taxes. For the month of November, it was down 36.10%. That is due to timing on one of the checks from Otoga County. Nothing to be worried about on that. Other than that, everything's running right in line where it should be on the revenue side. The next sheet is the tax breakdown comparison, showing how we fared for the month of November for each of the different types of taxes. You will see that most everything was up for the month. Let's see. Next one is the expense report. We are 16.67% through the year on the expense side of things. So as you'll see, everybody is running right in line where they should be on their spending so far this year. The next sheet in the packet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see that on the revenue side, we're 8.33% through the year, and we've already received 9.1% of our budget. On the expense side, we are running right in line on the expense side as well. We've got some debt payments that were paid to pay off the, one of the SRF bonds, and so you'll see that the debt percentage is pretty high so far this year, and that's the reason for that. The next sheet in your packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will see that they are running right in line where they should be on revenues and expenses as well for the year. You'll notice at the bottom that it has the bank account balances for each of these funds on these income statements, so you can kind of get a one-sheet picture of what's going on in that fund. The next sheet in the packet is the Judicial Special Revenue Fund. You'll see that they're running pretty close to right in line where they should be on revenues and looking really good on the expense side, and you can see the balances for those accounts as well. The next sheet in the packet is the bank account balances report. You will see that the total of all city cash accounts at the end of November 2014 was $11,267,708.26. And the next sheet in the packet would be the accounts payable and debt balances report, which shows the total of city debt at the end of November 2014 is $41,899,913.46. And you will notice that this is the first month that the 2007 EDI warrants have dropped off, so we paid them off in the month of November. So, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Does any council member have any questions or comments for Mr. Mosley this time? Thank you. We'll go into an agenda. We do have a consent agenda. We have four items to consider, to be placed on a consent agenda. Number one is a resolution to declare various wheel license to be a public nuisance in order in the payment protite 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number two is a resolution to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to Jim and Nick's Auburn LLC doing business as Jim and Nick's Barbecue Prattville. Number three is a resolution to set up public hearing to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to Al Polonio Ramirez doing business as La Poblano Two. Resolution number four is to appoint Julie Gunn to the library board. We have a motion to place these items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor placing these items on a consent agenda, signified by raising your right hand? And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. We have a motion to approve these items.
Motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on any of these four items? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signified by raising your right hand? And the consent agenda has been adopted. Further in our agenda, first item is an ordinance to declare 12 X-26 out-of-warranty tasers surplus and to authorize trade-in to Gov. State Distributors. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the following items are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. 12 X-26 tasers. Be ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to trade in said tasers, as is to the Gov. State Distributors, for the budget purchase of 12 X-26P tasers. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance of permanent nature, the rules must be suspended in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signified by raising your right hand? The rules have been now suspended. Would it be in a discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this ordinance is adopted. Item number two is an ordinance also to surplus various equipment from the Parks and Recreation Department. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the equipment listed below are hereby declared surplus of the Parks and Recreation Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Toro sprayer model 4122O, John Deere aerator model Aircore 1000. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said equipment on govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is an ordinance also, and it must be suspended also. Do we have a motion to suspend?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have now been suspended. Be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this ordinance is adopted. Number three is an ordinance also to declare eight digital alley-in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror system surplus and to authorize trade-in to Digital Alley Incorporated. Counselor Starnes, please.
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the following items are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Eight digital alley-in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems. Be ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to trade these systems in, as is, to Digital Alley Incorporated, for the trading value of $500 each, for a total of $4,000 in conjunction with Resolution 2014-B, page blank. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance also of permanent nature, the rules must be suspended. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion to suspend? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules are now suspended. Would it be in a discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to award bid number 014-015 to emergency lighting by Hanes for the purchase of emergency lights, equipment, and installation of eight 2015 Ford interceptors SUVs for the police department at a cost not to exceed $34,911.92. Counselor Starnes, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for emergency lights, equipment, and installation for eight 2015 Ford interceptor SUVs, and whereas eight bids were let to the police department for said emergency lights, equipment, and installation, and whereas two sealed bids were received, open, read, in public, December 4, 2014. Whereas emergency lighting by Hanes was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $4,363.99 per vehicle, and whereas said emergency lights, equipment, and installation is a budgeted expense for the police department. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 014-015 an amount of $34,911.92 to emergency lighting by Hanes for emergency lights, equipment, and installation, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item, police department, equipment, maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on this item? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? This item is adopted. Number five is a resolution to award bid number 014-016 to Digital Alley Incorporated for the purchase of in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems for eight 2014 interceptor SUVs for the police department at a cost not to exceed $27,960. Counselor Starnes, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems for eight 2015 Ford interceptor SUVs, and whereas nine bids were let for the police department for said systems, and whereas one sealed bid was received, open, and read in public on December 9, 2014, and whereas Digital Alley Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $3,995 per system, and whereas there is a trade-in credit of $500 each on eight out-of-warranty systems pursuant to ordinance 2014, page blank, and whereas said systems are a budgeted expense for the police department. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 014-016 an amount of $27,960 to Digital Alley Incorporated for in-vehicle digital video systems, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2015 budget line item, police department, equipment, maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this resolution is adopted. Resolution number six is to authorize the mayor to enter into a continuation of a regional training center agreement with the Alabama Fire College and Personnel Standards Commission to host a regional training center at 290 Eklund Boulevard and 350 County Road 4 West. Counselor Bowles, please.
Whereas Resolution Book 2012, page 12, the City Council of the City of Prattville authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Fire College and Personal Standards Commission to utilize the premises located at 290 Eklund Boulevard to host a regional training center, and whereas said agreement is due to expire January 17, 2015. And whereas Alabama Fire College has requested to continue the partnership, utilize said classroom space, and associated facilities for training use. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves in the agreement with the Alabama Fire College and Personal Standards Commission to use the training office and classrooms located at 290 Eklund Boulevard, and the fire training tower and classrooms located at 350 County Road 4 West to host a regional training center. Said agreements are continued until January 17, 2018, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the provision outlined in the contract. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to execute said contract of regional training center agreement for all on the behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on this item? Counselor Bowles.
Just one comment real quick about the fire training. I had a friend of mine that came up last week, week before last, from Tampa, Florida, and went through a class that was put on by the state. So it's just not our men that are using this, it's people from the southeast that are using this. And I really do appreciate all the effort and the hard work the fire department has put into the buildings, maintaining this process, keeping our guys trained. And it's a lot of work, and it's a really good star for us to have on our community. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any further comment on this item? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number seven is a resolution to enter into an agreement with Constantine Engineering to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services in an amount not to exceed $73,000 net cost to the city, not to exceed $14,600, for the resurfacing of East Main Street from Shady Oak Lane to McQueen Smith Road for project number STP 887804 (603). Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface East Main Street from Shady Oak Lane to McQueen Smith Road, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires construction, engineering, and inspection services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Constantine Engineering to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for 80% of said cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Constantine Engineering to perform construction, engineering, and inspection services for resurfacing East Main Street in an amount not to exceed $73,000, net cost to the city not to exceed $14,600, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item, capital project fund miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number eight is a resolution to ratify and affirm the rebuild of one grit conveyor for the Pine Creek Treatment Facility by Collier Machine and Fabrication Incorporated at a cost of $6,750. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the wastewater department had a need to rebuild a nine-inch grit conveyor for the Pine Creek Treatment Facility, and whereas said services were provided by Collier Machine and Fabrication Incorporated at a cost of $6,750, whereas said expense was budgeted for the wastewater department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby ratifies and affirms the rebuild of the grit conveyor by Collier Machine and Fabrication Incorporated at a cost of $6,750, and said firm funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item, wastewater department enterprise fund capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be in a discussion on this item? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, if anyone in the audience, we'll take comments from persons present on any other item that you'd like to discuss, please come forward. Mayor, you have?
Yes, sir. I live on 859 Washfair Road, and I got a note, you know, about the time limit.
Sir, can you state your name and address for the clerk?
Freddie Nobles, and my place is 859 Washfair Road. And I got another note saying the time had run out, but everyone's giving the time limit. I need a little more time.
Okay. Sir, I think, let me just address Mr. Wilson while you're here. Is that on your agenda?
I have a report, if you'd like, for me to pass out to you, council members, on the ones that were extended till the end of the year, to pass out to the council this evening.
Do you know whether this was one of them or not?
This was one of them. Councilman Wood, I met with Mr. Nobles on Friday, just to get to the core of the matter. They're keeping the lot clean. They have added screens to the windows, but the house is not sealed up. There's been little work done to the interior of the home. They've removed a lot of the debris and the belongings that they had, but there was... It's basically just as it was when this measure started.
Let me just suggest, sir, that he has a report to give to each and every one of the council members, and we will review the report, but I would also ask that you get with him again. We will, as far as the council is concerned, as far as I'm concerned, let me speak for myself and not for the council, we have given out, I believe, time for various individuals, and at this point, we're going to stick with the timing, but right now, we're going to review the report, and we haven't gotten it yet, sir.
Well, the first meeting, which was the last meeting I come to, y'all told me to get with him the following week. I went and got with him. He said he didn't know what y'all was expecting of him. He got my phone number. He said to get with y'all, he'd get back with me. This is the first time he's got back with me, right here, with the 10th.
Again, let us, we'll review that report and see what's in it, and we'll go from there. Does anyone have any questions, comments for the...
I have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to make. My brother is disabled, and he's had surgery since the last meeting, or was it right before or during? Right after, right before the last meeting that we attended, and his doctor had not released him for quite some time. He has to have one more surgery, and then he will get a settlement in order to rebuild and fix the house back up to be livable. All he's asking is for just a little bit more time, if y'all could possibly grant that.
Okay. And I think we will take that under consideration. The end of the year is not here, and I guess that's why he's handing us a report, so that we can review and get back with him on what measure will be taken. Again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Mayor, you have any other comments? Hold on, I see the judge getting up. I didn't see his hand.
My time, too, is Al Booth, 512 Otunca Street. Talking about the property 101, East Fourth Street, West Fourth Street, 101 North Chestnut, 101 North Chestnut. oh one North Chestnut, one oh one North Chestnut. Building has been burned several years ago. And y'all gave me six months, and my six months will be up this month. I had planned to hire someone to do the work, talk to him about it, and then when he was ready to proceed, it was his intention at that time to just tear off the old porch and build a new one. And that isn't what he and I spoke about when I intended to hire him. And so I told him that I, that wasn't satisfactory, for it to look like it did. I think you have to work with what is there, and then build on to that. And that's what I have been trying to do myself, with some help. Certainly won't be through by the end of the month. I would ask for a little more time.
As I stated to that gentleman, unless the council, or unless someone from the council has something else to say, we're gonna take Mr. Wilson's report and review it and see what's in it. Everyone, I believe, that has come before us in the last four to six months, we're given end of the year, and we're gonna review and see how far they are, and then we will probably address that at our first meeting in January.
Could I see a copy of that?
I'm sure he can. We're gonna finish the meeting, he had have them there, and that'll kind of let us know exactly how far along everyone has gone with their property.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments at this time? Mayor, you have any further comments?
Closing comments, again echo some of the same ones, was, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year. I want to thank all the department heads again, my staff, Teresa and Meredith, for everything that you guys have done. David McDowell, thank you for all your services here, and also this council. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor Stripp.
I too express appreciation to all the staff and fellow council members, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to tell everybody, have a Merry Christmas. Don't forget the reason for the season, have a Happy New Year, and hope to see y'all back here the first of the year.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everyone, but a special thanks to the special events departments and urban management departments who have done so much right now around the season to make Prattville look so beautiful. Comments from everybody who comes into town, through town, or people who just live here and love how beautiful it is this time of year. You've gone to a lot of effort, things have changed, flowers up, decorations up, it looks beautiful. Thank you. I enjoy it every day.
Let me take this opportunity, as always, to thank all the employees for what you do. Wish you all a Merry Christmas, hope you have a Happy New Year. First of all, I hope you're healthy and safe, and we do thank you for all that you do. Immediately after the beginning of the year, we look forward to filling this vacant seat. To my left, I think all the resumes are in, it's been closed, and we will be doing that interview the first of the year and trying to fill that seat. Again, thank you, and I pray that you all have a safe journey home. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.